The following program is not a New Channels production, and New Channels has no responsibility for the content or opinions expressed therein.
Hello, my name is Terry Reynolds. To the citizens of the city of Fulton, I've been videotaping meetings since January of 1992. My only motive is a firm belief that an informed electric will make an informed decision at election time that will ultimately benefit us all. Videotapes of all City of Fulton Common Council meeting are available to rent free of charge to the public at Video World. Thank you, my name is Terry Reynolds.
Mayor?
President.
First Ward.
Here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
All present except for Third Wardroom.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk called, and he had to stay at work, and I think everybody realizes the situation out there. He works in the Miller can plant, so I'm sure that he would be reluctant to jeopardize his job if they asked him to stay. And since we do have a quorum to work with, I told him I didn't think there was any problem as long as he had to stay at work. First item, please.
I'll let you address it.
Present a meeting in the Common Council Hall on November 4th. City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing to be held at this meeting on December 7th relative to the proposed amendments to the rules and regulations of the Fulton Municipal Board of Plumbing Examiners. Mayor declares a public hearing open.
I'd like to have Mr. Skateri, the Chairman of the Plumbing Board, speak on this, please. He was very active in helping to draft these amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say congratulations on your recent successful surgery.
Me?
All of you. The bone and flesh has been removed. Apparently, at least one of you is immuneed.
Oh, okay.
But for the grace of God...
Thank you.
...dare sit I. Congratulations to the winners, though I haven't figured out what they won yet, but the trends of change have come across the Chamber of Commerce, our Chamber of Counsel here, and we get to see what will result when the dust settles in two years, unless let's hope it's good.
Amen.
As far as the proposal for plumbing code amendments, in the beginning of the year, we offered a proposal which you voted on and put into the code book. That had to do with licensing plumber regulation, plumbers' fees and testing and so on, and who could sit for examination. So that was strictly plumbers. The second batch of laws had already been passed in 1986, and we have public notice of that ruling. It's been in the file, City Clerk's Office File Cabinet ever since. It had never gone into the code book, which we call the Green Book. And I believe you all went to your mailboxes, and you have copies of it. The amendment hasn't changed much, except for that we're adding heating licensing, and I'll address that in a minute. But the 182.14 deals with who can do plumbing and how the plumbing shall be done. And if you have a list there, there are about nine points, and I don't know if you want me to read them or not, but I'll have copies if anyone wants to look at them.
Can I ask a question on one?
Yes.
Number nine, I'm not sure as to what a backflow prevention device is.
That is something we've began installing this year. It's to keep the system from siphoning from the house, toilets, toilet tank, deodorizers, into the drinking system. It also keeps hoses and so on from sucking unwanted water, debris and so on, into the system. So the back preventer just keeps the water flowing clean in one direction.
So, in your opinion, probably many of the homes don't have them, or wouldn't have?
No, no. In fact, Florida has been using this for years because you leave a garden hose laying out on the ground, and it'll siphon up pesticides and so on in the drinking water. We have that on an outside spigot. We have a preventer right now on the hose connection. What we're trying to do is keep this business from going out into our drinking system. We don't want to draw everything that may be in a house that's contaminated into our drinking water, into the main.
Any idea about what that cost to do?
Well, you can buy a preventer for as little as $12 and as much as $35. Depends on how elaborate you want it to be.
It's not prohibited, though?
No, no. It'll be included in the cost of the water service when it's...
Al, is that going to be installed on new installations?
New installations.
Thank you.
Don't you think it should say that?
It is mandated. Section of the sanitary code that eventually to be installed on all systems coming off the municipal water.
You mean, that's already part of the code?
It was passed effectively in January of, or December of this year, past '92. And it's part of the cross-connection control legislation.
When he thought he was on mic, he can't hear what he's saying.
Backflow prevention was part of the sanitary code the state passed, Section 8, right? Section 5. It was passed by the state, and it's part of cross-connection control. And what it does is protect the municipal water system from contaminants coming from residents or businesses, and what he's talking about with back siphonage. Back siphonage can be anything inside a house or business that can back siphon into the municipal system. Case in point is where the fire department will use a hydrant to put out a fire and will drain a boiler with antifreeze or whatever chemical in it back into the city's municipal system. It has happened, there's case history for it happening, and this is what propagated the law. These, in putting it within this, we follow a mandate that makes it mandatory on all services going to all businesses and houses. It will be done as they're changed, but it also needs to be done with all of them eventually. However long that takes, it's hard to say, and it's hard to be able to...
Now, does the state law mandate, or do they grant father of their own house?
They mandated, although that part of the legislation isn't in place yet. But it is mandated that eventually all water services from the municipal system will be backflow prevented.
Okay, Mr. Rice?
Thank you.
Anything else on this list of regulations?
Yeah, Al, on the section, paragraph on top of the second page, I don't agree with that, that a multiple dwelling, except for the homeowner's own apartment, should be done by a licensed plumber. I think that an owner of a multiple dwelling should be able to do his own work as long as it's inspected by the plumbing inspector and approved, because that's going to put a burden on these people that are doing and have been doing it for years.
That's the problem.
Well, the problem is it hasn't been inspected.
Can I address that?
Yeah, sure.
We may have four, three, four, five, six apartment dwellings. If a man wants to jeopardize his own health and safety by doing the plumbing in his own apartment, that is okay with us, but we don't want him jeopardizing other tenants in that same structure. And the way he can jeopardize their safety and health is the fact that they don't know anything about proper venting, anti-siphoning, siphoning off of toilets, monoxide, improper water line installation, toxic plastic rather than copper, wrong soldering, 95.5 instead of 50.50. There are a lot of things that the homeowner doesn't know about plumbing. Now, if he wants to sit down with the Plumbing Board and take a test and show us that he is competent to do it, then he can do all the dwellings he wants. But until then, we can't put the other tenants in that building at risk. And another problem would be water heaters. He may put in five water heaters. He may run five water heaters on one flue. He may not put relief valve drains. He may point the relief valve in the wrong direction. When it blows, it's 210 degrees. It has to be drained to the ground.
Can I ask you a question?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
All of the items that you just brought up, would they not show up in a final inspection of a plumbing job?
If that man sees fit to have it inspected.
Rather than maybe putting the restrictions on it, you're trying to do it solely done by a licensed plumber, then any plumbing that's been done would have to be done by permit and then inspected, not necessarily by a plumber, but definitely would have to be inspected by the Plumbing Board.
Well, it does say that it has to be inspected regardless of who does it.
But this would curtail them in order to have to get a permit in order to proceed with their own job.
We can do that. I mentioned the fact that if they came to the board and said, "I'd like to prove my competency," and then we would allow them a special permit to do that particular job. And regardless of what you may think, it isn't for any other purpose but for the safety of the people. I've been in business in this city for 33 years, and some of the work I've found is It's just not safe. It's unsafe.
Then that would take away from the housing inspector job and so forth. You could eliminate one of the city jobs then, couldn't you?
No way, Mike. The ones we have now can't even begin to keep up with the work that they are doing.
Plumbers are going to do it.
Don't worry. He'll have enough to do, believe me.
How about an individual? It's a Clayton family house, and we have to have a plumber to change a faucet?
No, you can do your own plumbing in your own house.
No, it says it right here that you can do your own.
The fact is, we're being lenient whether you know it or not. The state code says you can't do it.
You've got a state code, why have a city?
Well, we're making an exception to the state code so you can put your own faucet in. It doesn't say that in state code. You can't do it. In Fulton, we're making an exception, with the one paragraph says a homeowner can do his own plumbing.
You've got a question. Wouldn't state code supersede the city code?
It always does. That's where most of our code comes from, state code.
There's a notation following that section, which is the attorney's opinion of Attorney General, dealing with that. Basically, the states, the state code says, no, no one can do plumbing but licensed individuals. But it says they do make allowances for the Plumbing Board to allow homeowners to do their own work in their actual residences.
Which we're doing. I have the notation. If you don't have it in front of you and you have to have it read, I would read it. But it's directly from State Code Attorney General's office. And we've bypassed that to allow for it. As far as the heating licensing, that is becoming a mandatory item, and we don't have much choice in that. New York State has a dozen cities already with heating licensing, and we want to add one more of a Plumbing Board member so we can, we'll have a Plumbing and Heating Board, and we'd like to add one member to it. Now, let me tell you, gentlemen...
Well, if you're going to do that, you have to pass local law. It is a local law.
Yeah, well, you have to appoint another member to our board to handle strictly the heating part of it, and then we'll become a Plumbing and Heating Board. And we have someone in mind who's been in the contracting business for a long time. He's licensed. He knows the business well. His name is Joe Langoyes, and he said he'd come on if his salary was doubled. In 1904, when the farmers were coming in to sit on committees and councils and boards around the city, they were given $10 a month to buy hay for the horses. It's 1994, we're still getting $10, which you know won't even buy a bale of hay, let alone a tank of gas.
That's true.
But Mr. Bullard, our incoming mayor, mentioned the fact a couple of times that he'd like to get some good, qualified, experienced people to sit on our boards, committees and commissions. And I think we already have some good people on those boards and commissions. There may be one or two he doesn't like, but in general, I think we have some good people. And you, gentlemen, are beggars, and you can't be too choosy at $10 a month. But if we can get people like Joe Langoyes and other licensed men to come and work on the board, I think we're doing very well. And I've worked hard this year. I put in a lot of time, and so is the Code Enforcement Office, so is the Plumbing Inspector's Office. And the people that are on the boards and the civil, I sat on the Civil Service Commission. Those people are good people, too. They work very hard. And I'm asking that the new council, city attorney, sitting judge, whoever it is, will continue to enforce the code as we have done this year. And I'll tell you, regardless of name, rank, or bank serial number, we've gone after some big people, and we didn't back down. And I think the law has to be enforced, not bent for anyone, no favoritism, no discrimination, no partiality. And I think we've done an excellent job of enforcing it. And I'd like to have Mr. Langoyes address the heating licensing, if I can have two more minutes.
I guess I'm up. I've had the opportunity to come here for other issues, but haven't really reflected my business. Well, a couple of points I'd like to make. The whole point of this is we've worked on this for over a year, and the whole point of this is safety. If anybody in this room thinks that we're trying to monopolize an industry, that's not the case. Another point that you want to look at is currently, the city of Syracuse already has this program. The city of Ithaca, Portland, other municipalities already require this. A contractor from the city of Syracuse who is not a local contractor can freely do work here, and he will continue to freely do work here. A contractor from the city of Oswego can continue to come into this area and do work. We're not looking to discriminate against anybody. What we are looking to do is make these situations safe, number one, and have minimum, absolute minimum qualifications. There are people who are doing jobs who don't even have insurance. Whether the homeowner who hires that person is aware of that or whether they aren't aware of that, I have no idea. But if something happens, something unsafe happens, who does that fall back on? The state currently, my understanding mandates that this city provide inspection service. All we're saying is that if you're going to provide this, you might as well provide it and have some way of controlling it. Right now, you don't have any idea who's doing work in the city of Fulton. You don't have any idea if anybody's pulling permits, because there currently aren't. It's very difficult to inspect something that never had a permit pulled. Right now, I'd like to answer any questions anybody on the board would have in regards to this.
I would have to agree with you. In my law practice, I've seen quite a few horror stories of heating contractors that come into the city and made installations that were absolutely dangerous. And I think that this proposal is, frankly, I don't think it goes far enough, but it certainly is a step in the right direction.
Are there any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, incidentally, in order to get your pay doubled, Joe, I think you might have to address the next council. We don't want to raise taxes any higher than is necessary. Any other comments on this proposed local law? Al?
While I have a chance, budgeting.
Wait a minute.
I'm not...
Does that have anything to do with this?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Yes. Our plumbing inspector runs one ad at the beginning of the year to list the licensed plumbers, and it immediately takes 2/3 of his budget, one newspaper ad. It's 250 bucks, going around borrowing stamps. What I'd like to have done is some of the money that our board is generating into the general fund via earmark back to the Plumbing Board, the Code Enforcement Office, so we can better do our job. We generate about $5,000 a year in licenses, fees, and permits.
Have you talked to the committee that is preparing the budget?
I did, with one or two gentlemen, and I had no definite response. I haven't been sitting on the budgets, but I'd like to have some of that money put back into our Code Enforcement Office so we can do a better job. And that we're going to be enforcing heating.
Why don't you talk to John Kirk and ask him to present a proposal to the council?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kevin Noble. It's the first time I've addressed this council.
Kevin, do me a favor. Can you lift that mic up, please, and see if it's operating? Okay, thanks.
I live at 316 Gansford Street, and this particular proposed change caught my eye because I've had a career in the heating and air conditioning industry. I worked for Johnson Controls, which is a $5 billion corporation that runs 3,000 service trucks in this country. It's also a very safety-conscious organization. I am trained and experienced in large burners and boilers. Most of my work is commercial. A very small part of my work is in the city of Fulton, even though I do live here. And I'd like to voice my support for this. I'd like to say first that I'm kind of fundamentally opposed to any increased regulation, but I believe that this is necessary. I have seen my share of horror stories. I spoke at length with Mr. Talents, and he's seen his share of horror stories. And Mr. Mayor, you've just confirmed that you've seen your share of potentially litigious horror stories. The one point that I want to make is that a lot is going to depend on the board regulating this area fairly and reasonably. I have been denied the opportunity to even take a test for a license in the past because I didn't have a specific number of hours of experience which could be confirmed by affidavit under a person who had been licensed in the municipality where I applied for a license. Now, Mr. Talents has said that we're not going to have anything like that here, and I'm encouraged to hear that. But I'd just like to lend my support to this. I think it's important that we stop the work that's being done unsafely. Heating equipment is far more complex than it was even 10 years ago. Heating equipment that goes into houses, it's far easier to make a mistake. Far more knowledge is necessary. We have a problem in this city with the quality of our housing stock, and I believe that this will give us a tool to help ensure the quality of at least renovation and new work that is done. And I'd just like to say I support it.
Can I have your last name again?
Noble, N-O-B-L-E.
What's your address?
316 Gansford.
Thank you. It's nice to have somebody that knows what they're talking about. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Motion?
A motion to approve the proposed amendments to the rules and regulations of the plumbing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Two, please.
Two is off.
Oh, yeah, that's off. There's a slight problem involved in that auction. We've discovered that there might be somebody that owns the property that hasn't recorded the deed, so this didn't come to our attention until recently.
Three, please. Resolved the following bills are hereby approved for payment. Leo Levitin, Syracuse, $1,661 for traffic cones. Oswego County Solid Waste, $8,151.50 for tip and fees. The items are budgeted, but over the $1,000 charter limit and requires the council's approval.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Four, please.
Resolved that Naga Mohawk is hereby authorized to remove the streetlights on Fols 32 and 34 located on South Sixth Street.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
These streetlights, lest anyone think that we're taking streetlights off the streets, these are within the Nestle property, and this is their request, and of course, it doesn't affect our street lighting at all. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Five, please.
Resolved that Chapter 16561 Vehicle Traffic Ordinance, City of Fulton, entitled Parking prohibited, certain hours be amended to read as follows. Ad 16561, Denisee Place, West Side, hours Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. from Chestnut Street to Cedar Street. 16561 Broadwell Ave, the West Side, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. from Oak Street to Chestnut Street.
This, as I understand, was a problem we have over there with high school personnel and students parking in these streets, on both sides of the streets, and creating a serious traffic hazard. So there's some action had to be taken to prohibit parking during those hours and to make the streets safe.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Six, please.
Resolved the City Clerk's report on the month of November, an amount of $3,990.77 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Seven, please.
Resolved the City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to re-advertise for public hearing to be held on December 21st, 7:30 p.m. in the council chambers of the Municipal Building in Fulton, New York, to consider the 1994 proposed budget, and that said advertisement should advise senior citizens, handicapped citizens, and their respective organizations that they have an opportunity to be heard. Be further resolved that the proposed 1994 budget shall be complete and available for public inspection at the office of the City Clerk in the Municipal Building in Fulton, New York, one week prior to the public hearing.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Would necessarily re-advertise this because the budget committee simply couldn't get a budget together in time. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Eight, please.
Resolved that scheduled bills payable through November 2nd, 1993, having been audited by the auditing committee are hereby approved.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Nine, please.
Resolved the Common Council hereby accepts a proposal submitted by Cato Inc., Weasport, New York, for redevelopment of Great Bear Wells II and III at a cost not to exceed $11,200. To be a direct charge to the source of pump and power and pumping well maintenance account, this is a budgeted item, and additional unforeseen work that becomes necessary may only be performed by authorization of the client at the rate of $115 per hour for said proposal.
I'll move it. Second.
This is a routine maintenance for the wells, and if it isn't done, the production decreases, and the, I understand from... And I understand from Roger Parsons, Water Commissioner, that pays for itself within 56 days. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Ten, please.
Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the easement agreement dated December 7th between the city of Fulton and Ernest G. Vandeleer Jr., subject to final review and approval of the city attorney.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Eleven, please.
Resolved that the police department is directed to conduct a traffic study at the intersection of East 12th and Fay Street for feasibility of installing four-way stop signs.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Under discussion, first item is remove the fire limits for the proposed new Chamber of Commerce building on South Second Street, or 481 across from Fay's. These fire limits, incidentally, are really obsolete and outmoded, and someday I hope they'll be modified to where they really make sense. The original intent was to protect the downtown area so that fires wouldn't spread as easily because buildings were built strictly out of wood. But they extended the fire limits way out of proportion to their original intention so that having fire limits in a location like that is frankly a little ridiculous.
This is not an uncommon thing. Tony Aguirre, who's the assistant fire chief, Steve Lund contacted him today, and they had no problems with doing this whatsoever. It's just basically a formality sometimes.
George?
Yeah.
Is there any reason that we have to keep the fire limits now through the whole city?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, the way the building codes are and all the fire prevention, they have to go into it, sprinkler systems, alarms, and things like that.
Wouldn't we have to have a public hearing on something like that?
Yeah. Well, it would be something, as Spencer suggests, to discuss with the fire chief, but I think your idea has some merit, Jim. I think it's kind of silly to have it extend through the city in view of the development of the services that we have now that probably at the time was done, we didn't have, at least not to the extent we have them today. Pardon me? It's a restriction on the materials you have to use in the building. Generally speaking, most of the time, it requires cement block instead of lumber.
We have a resolution on this?
Yes. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
He didn't read the resolution yet. Did you?
No.
Oh, you didn't read the resolution?
No.
Why don't we draw the motion?
I'll try.
Thank you. Okay, John. Joe?
Resolved the property belonging to the Fulton Chamber of Commerce located on South Second Street, block 7, lot 1.2, parcel 151, and the fourth ward of City of Fulton being hereby is removed from the provision of Section 75.1, the Fulton City Code, to allow for a public service building.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. We also have a gentleman that we don't want to address the council on the services of MCI, which is a long-distance corporation, as I understand it. Jim, you want to introduce him?
Yeah, we have Dwayne Norton from MCI who wants to address us and explain what he asked to offer versus what we have now with AT&amp;T. And I don't expect that we're going to take any action, especially tonight, or might not want to take any action at all. But usually, we have the new council at the meetings too, so I figured he could address both groups.
Thank you.
I just want to extend my appreciation for letting you guys, or for having you guys have me here tonight. I met with James earlier, about a month ago, I believe it was, with Mrs. Campbell. I went over basically the phone bill for the city. What I found was you guys are on AT&amp;T, and basically, what you're, the product you're on is called a Dial-1 product, which is full-minute rounded. So basically, what that means is, you talk to an answering machine or something like that for 15 to 30 seconds, you hang up, you can look down at your watch, and you're paying until the next full minute. Basically, the average is 28.5 cents a minute for the product the city is on. The product that I am offering is basically from the League of Nations. There's 85,000 members of the League of Nations. What they've done, they've wanted to go on one product, one long-distance carrier, without having to make switches or making bids year after year after year. What they've done was to buy a company called Pitt, it's Public Technology Incorporated. What they've went out, what they've done is went out and bid on basically long-distance carriers for the service they offered and the competitive price that they had to offer to the cities. What they found was MCI was going to be able to provide the service that they wanted at the competitive price. Like I said earlier, you guys are paying 28.5 cents on the average. This product is 13.5 cents on the average. So if you figure it out, if you're doing a $100 phone bill for a whole city with AT&amp;T which you're on, the analogy through this, the methodology is 13.5 cents, brings it down to about $47. So basically, it's cutting your phone bill in half easily through the product that I have to offer. It's basically a transparent switch. You guys don't even know, you don't dial any different, you don't know it's been switched at all. Only thing you'll be getting is basically more savings. Instead of 28.5 cents a minute, you're going to be getting 13.5 cents a minute.
Is that on all calls?
Outside the 315 area code, yes. Basically, like if you call in the 607 area code, you talk for 30 seconds, like I said, it is basically 34 cents a minute in New York State on the product that you're on. Okay? That same phone call in New York State, if you called my house in 607, where my mom lives, on this product, and you talk for 30 seconds, you've been paying about 7 cents for that phone call. The product that you're on, you're paying 34 cents.
How can MCI charge so much less than AT&amp;T?
Okay, what this is, is a government-driven product, it's a government rate structure. What this is offering you guys is the pricing structure of a Merrill Lynch, or an IBM, or Coca-Cola. Basically, the only way you can get that much volume, or get that much of a price structure, is for the amount of volume you use. That's with the 85,000 League of Nations, there's 85,000 members in the League of Nations. That's how we can offer it, because it's spread out over a number of cities, counties, school districts. So far, Auburn City is on this product. I put on Oswego County, I'm working with Osido County, Kiuga County is on this product. We're working right now with Jefferson County. There's about 30 different school districts, Cornell proper extension groups that are on this product also. Today alone, I put on Fulton City School Districts and Oswego City School Districts.
Well, is there a minimum number of customers you have to have for this to stay in effect?
No. Basically, what it is, it's based on individuality when you come to it. Say, if five decided to leave, the price is not going to rise at all. You're guaranteed this price when you're on it. And the only way to get off this pricing structure is basically change carriers. So as long as you're on MCI with this product that I have to offer to you guys, I can give you that 13.5 cents average.
Is this a rate that's governed by the PSC?
PTI, yes. Basically, this PTS 2000 is a tariff product through the FCC. So basically, when I put you on, if I was to put you guys on this product, you'd stay on that product, you would be getting that rate structure.
But that's only for calls outside the 315 area, you said?
Right. When I looked at the bill before, it averages anywhere from $100 to $200, somewheres in that area.
Is it that high?
Somewheres in that area, yes. What I said was, I took a minimum, say $100. You divide the $100 by 28.5 cents, you come up with something like 300 and some odd minutes. You multiply the minutes by 13.5 cents, what I have the offer as the average, and it comes up to about $47. Okay? So it's cut, basically cut your long-distance bill almost in half. Basically, what you can do is you can relocate those monies to places where you want to go to, like the new position.
I'm sure, not sure I understand. Are you saying there is a minimum of $100?
No. Your phone bill averages from $100 to $200 a month.
Oh, ours does?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What I did was, I took $100, say a minimum that you guys have for a month. I divided it by 28.5 cents a minute. That's what you're getting on the average with AT&amp;T. Okay? And it comes up to something like 300 and one odd minutes.
So you're saying you can cut it down to $47?
That $100 bill on AT&amp;T on this product would have been about $47. Okay? If it was more, if it was about $200, basically, it would have cut it down that much more for you guys.
MCI, Jim, is only a long-distance carrier, has nothing to do with local service. AT&amp;T's the same thing. Well, I think, you know, if you've got some kind of proposal you can submit to the council, I'm sure we won't be able to act on it this year, but the next council might be interested.
The thing I was thinking about was, I want to present it to you guys, and James said that there was going to be some of the new council here. I want to present it to them, so basically, we could start off the new year on.
Yeah, but I think it ought to be a written proposal.
Right. No, I understand.
Yeah, then I would pass it on to the oncoming mayor.
Okay. Basically, I talked with James, he asked me to talk to Don Bullard. I talked to him, and then he wanted me to address him.
I would say it definitely has, sounds interesting. And thank you very much.
Excuse me, do you have any line cards?
Doesn't make any difference.
It's not going to affect your calling pattern at all. You're going to dial out the same.
I've been in Florida, tried to call home, and you can't just dial your number. They went through a mess, 14 different operators to try and find the code to dial up here. Finally, they gave up.
When was this?
When? A couple of years ago.
Well, it does make a difference what area you're in. If you're in an AT&amp;T area and you're an MCI customer, then you have to have a code to get it, to get through. That's true. But it works the other way, too. I've been, I'm on AT&amp;T, and I've been in a different area from AT&amp;T, and they wouldn't take the call. And I didn't know that there was a code. And once I found the code, then I had no problem dialing that first to get you into the AT&amp;T circuits. It's a lot of fun.
Excuse me, do you have any brochures?
Basically, what I did was, I put together a package where I just went through here, I had the rate structure right here, and I also had the breakdown from full-minute to six-second rounding. You guys are on, like I said, you guys are on a full-minute rounding, so if you talk for 30 seconds, you hang up the phone, basically, you can look at your watch until the next full minute, and that's what you're paying for, whether you use it or not. Okay?
Do you have eight copies of that?
I can make copies of it. I didn't know how many to bring, because I, I mean, I thought it was only going to bring maybe one or two people.
For the six councilmen, the mayor, and then the new city attorney.
There'll be no problem then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have anything they want to bring before the council? Mike?
Just a question. You mentioned something about parking on Denishay. What side of the street you want to allow parking, right, or east or west side, or what's that?
Joe, could you read that resolution again for me there? Number five, please. This was upon a recommendation from the traffic department.
Okay, Denishay Place, West Side, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., from Chestnut Street to Cedar Street. Broadwell Ave on the West Side, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., from Oak Street to Chestnut Street.
It's the West Side, then, Mike?
That's where it's prohibited.
That's where it's prohibited. You're not on Denishay.
I guess I am on Denishay and Chestnut. Right on the corner.
Yeah, I thought you were on Chestnut.
No. I'm with the junk set in my area where the kids have their picknicks.
Well, why don't you call the police?
They won't pick up the stuff.
No, I mean, when they're there. Well, Mike, if you don't do anything about it, they're going to continue to do it.
I've called it at least so many times yours, and they say, hello, Mike. You need to say, what are you on?
Try calling me.
Oh, Mike. They got other things to do besides picking up.
Well, all they got to do is drive by in the pro car.
I bet they crashed it. They don't put it in the bus. Poor basketball players. Oh, boys, come and run it.
I love it. The school district planned already for the addition, and then they come to the city and say, we need additional parking. Anyone else? Tom?
The garbage budget there, is that going to be brought up later?
Yep. Next meeting. Is it next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else?
George? I just wondered, did you receive my proposal?
Yeah. Oh, right. Are we going to run it through?
Yeah. I got the question. What's on the agenda?
George, what the hell are we going to do with the fire?
It's a different meeting, but this garbage thing is not supposed to be on the 14th.
14th.
That's not the next meeting. Next meeting is the 14th.
It's on the 14th?
No, we have a special meeting on the 14th.
The 14th is for the local laws for the garbage district. The 21st is the budget hearing.
All right. Yeah, you're right. And it is the 14th.
The budget hearing was going to be the 14th, and we moved it to the 21st.
You're right. You're right. 14th, I'm sorry.
It didn't get on the agenda.
We'll have it on the next meeting. I'm sorry. Put it on the agenda for next meeting, Joe. Anyone else? Motion to go in executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried.
What you can do is have a public hearing.